Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we please have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Ms. Antellus. Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Poit.
Here.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yeah.
Mr. Zarneski.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted August 15, 2013, one at Old Schools, two, Home News Tribune, three, Cranberry Press, and four, filed with the Clerk of the municipality. And before we start, I just want to say Ms. Antellus is not here this evening. Unfortunately, her mother just recently passed away, so the Board sends our regrets to her and her family. And number five, student board members, they are on vacation because it's summer and we look forward to having them back in September meeting. And at this time, we will have our Cheerleaders National Championship Ring Awards. We're very excited and very proud to congratulate our Monroe Township High School Cheerleaders on winning a national championship. And we are going to present them this evening with certificates and well-deserved rings as board policy.
Okay, Mr. Byer, you want to set us up and introduce who's going to introduce, and then Mrs. Koloponowicz and I will come up and present certificates and rings. Yes?
Hi. This is a great night for us. We have a fantastic achievement of these ladies. A lot of hard work, a lot of fundraising went into this national championship. They start right at the end of June and they go all the way to the beginning of April. It's not something that comes every year, obviously, and it's a well-deserved for their hard work. They're in competitions throughout the wintertime, and their final event is always down in Orlando, Florida, where they won the AmeriCheer National Championship. So let's give these ladies a big hand. And at this time, I'd like to introduce one of the co-head coaches. Ms. Kelly, she will introduce each athlete.
And before you do that, I just want to take a moment to commend the young ladies for doing such an outstanding job, and particularly those who emailed me and called my office to make sure that you got your rings and to make sure that you were not overlooked and to make sure that you were held in the same regard as some of the other sports. So I applaud you for that.
Good evening. Before we start actually calling names, I would just like to acknowledge our graduated seniors. Many of them are not here tonight. Actually, I don't see any of them, which means they've probably moved on to the next new exciting chapter of their life. Lindsay Zibrik, Callie Lucas, and Carly Johnson were our captains this year. Other seniors were Ally Sullivan, Jessica Keano, Alyssa Talalai, Brooksie Aston, and Heather Fleming. So all of those young ladies have moved on. Some at Florida State, one at Ohio State, one at the University of South Carolina. They're all over. So we certainly wish they were here with us tonight, but we know they're here in spirit. So just wanted to acknowledge those ladies. All right. Ms. Paige Albeck. Alyssa Dobrosky. Ashley Dilks. Mary Ann Glead. Taylor Smith. Kayla Coghlan. Brianna Guerrero. Thomasine Nadio. Alyssa Purcell. Rebecca Tesler. Gianna Vasallo. Stephanie Vacuna. Michaela Agresto. Jessica Albrecht. Who always smiles, by the way. Always. And then the total opposite, Sabrina Chaffee. Victoria Gianola. Jenna Marshall. Madeline Mullin. Sunny Warden. Girls, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you. I picked up my ring yesterday, and I keep looking down at it, almost like when I got my engagement ring, I keep looking at it thinking, "Ooh, it's so pretty." So I want to thank you for that because all your hard work gave me this ring on my finger. So keep going in the same direction. I wouldn't change the direction for anything, maybe just one small pit stop at states. Pick up that state championship and then right back on the same road to nationals, because I definitely think you have the talent to get there. So thank you. It's been an honor to be your coach, and I'll be around. So thank you, girls.
So we can go back next year for another ring. We expect a victory cheer from you guys.
Oh, okay. We'll work on that. We would have prepared one had we known we had the time, but that's okay. Thank you.
I'm Paige. I'm going into my senior year, and on behalf of my team, I would like to thank the Board of Education for making this possible. So thank you.
And also, what would a team be without its advisor? So Ms. Kelly, thank you very much.
Okay, and you're free to sit.
Or leave.
I think girls on the board should get away, too.
Yeah, right. How about that?
Everybody goes with the principal.
Okay. At this time, we will go to number seven on the agenda. Our university presentation, and we're going to turn this over to Dr. Jeff Gorman.
You're on.
Nelson wasn't on that list, was he?
Who?
Danny Yankee shirt up there?
Nelson for what?
No, for Warren, for Morgan. See, he's the kind of guy that we have that comes to our meetings all the time. It's like, come, come. Because these two guys also.
His attention to give him a thumbs up, but he's not even looking. It's not my day.
Mr. Tesler?
Am I on your way?
They gave an iPad to everybody in the audience, so they could follow along?
What am I supposed to do with this?
They should give an iPad to everybody.
Okay.
Actually, we've got to get something permanent.
Doctors, how do you work this thing?
Like, am I waiting for something?
Well, we have tutors for you.
You're funny. Okay, good evening, everyone. We wanted to give the Board of Education an update and some time to interact with some of the tools that our students will be using, using the iPads. If you, if the Board recalls, Courtney Pepe was applied and nominated and was successful in becoming an Apple Distinguished Educator. She's one of 2,000 in the entire nation, international and nation. And so over the summer, she went to several institutes. She's been bettering her trade, and she's got some really dynamic things to show you and have you interact with. We offered a course to some of our teachers at the end of last year on iTunes University as the digital, the digital era evolves. So just to set up Courtney before she starts, and she's going to wow you with what she's doing. If you, if you're familiar with iTunes on a computer, any computer that you go to, iTunes, and you go to K-12 education, Apple has an educational platform, and this has really been a foundation of a lot of the work that we've been doing. If you go to K-12, there are over 1,000, I think, well over 1,000. I started counting them the other night, but I stopped because it was too much. But what has happened is that we now are a presence on iTunes University, and if you see Monroe Township School District, that is a new presence on iTunes University, so anyone in the world can access this. And Courtney has developed three courses, three digital courses, using our resources, and that can be accessed by anyone in the world. And similarly, we can access courses throughout the world from different K-12 institutions, both nationally and internationally. If you look at my filter, there's Australia, Belgium, and so even if I just filter down to the United States, it's a very extensive process. So what we'd like you to do is just give us about 10 minutes, and Courtney's going to take you through her course, and she's going to ask you to actually use your iPad to get a feel for what the kids are starting to do in their classes. And again, this is an evolution from moving towards digital content, and she'll highlight all the, some really, really neat things that are very engaging, and she'll talk about workflow and digital workflow and everything else that goes along with it. Courtney?
So Devin, we want to...
Seminole County, Florida, just had 11,000 computers delivered and installed last week, two weeks ago, when I was there.
Laptops.
Hmm?
What kind?
What kind?
Dell.
I don't know. I think cheerleaders might be a hard act to follow, but here we go. I made a little introductory video.
Good evening. Dr. Gorman and I are the Monroe Township High School Public Presence in iTunes University. This new opportunity for students in our district will foster a climate of rigor and innovation that will improve student achievement and outcomes. This educational tool combined with other resources in our iPad initiative will make it easy to unleash the full power of the iPad in our classrooms. iTunes University is a resource that supplements our board-approved curriculum in any subject, allows the teachers to share course content in a powerful way, and gives our students a rich and immersive learning experience using the iTunes U app for the iPad. I welcome the opportunity to introduce you to this resource tonight because it is a great time to be a teacher and a student in the Monroe Township School District.
So what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the advantages of using iTunes University in the classroom. One of the great advantages is that it doesn't cost anything. It's free. So we like that. And fortunately for me, because I'm now part of a worldwide community of Apple Distinguished Educators, I have the ability to access classes and content from friends of mine that are forensics teachers in Maine or geometry teachers in Kansas. There's just so much free content out there that's aligned with the Common Core standards. It's a really amazing tool. But let me talk to you about what the first day of school in my classroom is going to look like. My students will all have their iPads, so I will direct them to the iTunes University app. They will go in there. They'll click on the K-12 section, and they'll scroll down to the M's. And I'm very proud to announce that we now have a public presence in iTunes U. So my students will click on the Monroe Township School District section, and depending on what course they have me for, they'll either subscribe to Forensics, Biology, or Chemistry. So all of the board members should have the Chemistry class. We already subscribed you into it, so it should be loaded onto your iPad. So I'm going to walk you through the course a little bit. So you can see it has an overview. Then I have my instructor bio. My students can email me. Friends of mine in New York tell me funny stories that when they first made their iTunes University courses public, that one of them got an email in Chinese because he had had like 162 people from different countries subscribe to his class. So it's a very exciting time to be an educator with all of these resources. Then you have the course outline, which just breaks down the course in various units. So then there is the post section. So I'm going to go to some of the beginning posts. It has my course syllabus, links to the Science Common Core State Standards. But one feature that I really wanted to show to the board tonight that I'm really excited about, because it just really helps with the whole workflow on the iPad, is how students can take notes within the course. So I'm going to show you a feature called Video Notes.
Hello, students. In today's lesson, we're going to be talking about chemistry, science, the scientific method as it relates to chemistry, and the five different types of chemistry. The five types of chemistry are organic chemistry, inorganic chemistry, biochemistry, analytical chemistry.
So I'm pausing this right now.
Hello?
Oh. Oh, I see that we have some eager people that are already, already in it. Devin, I need your technical assistance for a minute. Okay. So what's happening right now is our technology can't keep up with our iTunes U technology. What's displayed on my screen that I can see is a split screen, so I can play the video, but then also there is a note function within the app that the students can pause the video at any time, and they can take notes. And then they can go and they can email these notes to me. They can take a screenshot of these notes and send them to me through eBackpack. So there's a lot of different possibilities. So I guess I will finish the video, and Dr. Gorman, did you want them to try maybe taking notes in it? You and I can walk around and assist them?
And Jeter, you here also? Good. So the three of us will help board members. If you want to watch that video and maybe take a note and identify one of the types of chemistry as you watch the video, then you get a flavor for what kids are doing in the class, and we'll walk you through and help you out. And I know Ken's an early adopter, so he's already halfway into the video.
He's a speedboat.
Okay.
The following program. And last but certainly not least, physical chemistry.
So I'm actually able now to go into the notes section, which is a different part of the course, and I'm going to show you. So these were notes that I had already taken on the five different types of chemistry. And all the notes that you take in the course are preserved throughout the school year. So it eliminates the need for students to spend money on a physical notebook for the class because it's all kind of synthesized on their iPads. And then instead of worrying about having to collect homework from 30 kids, I can just simply have them click on this button, and they can email it to me. So I'm going to walk around and assist. So how you would take notes in this is you click on this, and you can type in and take notes.
Can I write it on a paper?
Yeah.
And then I can go back to the video. Or I can go to the video and then go to the note.
I'm here, Courtney, because I'm not sure.
Okay, I'll get you back into the post, and so here we are.
Why should you tell you to watch a lecture on chemistry and take notes?
Oh, it always cracks up. I think you can actually turn auto direction.
Okay, answer now.
Not my best subject. That's why I went in the camera.
Wouldn't even know what a question to ask or what a note to take, right?
All right. All right. That's all right.
But that's okay.
I was just scrolling around.
I feel someone's never seen my eye.
So the next thing that I'm going to talk about within the course is an exciting thing called qualitative formative assessment. We're really focused on assessment right now in this district in order to improve student outcomes. So one thing that I like about the iPad is we have these great screencasting apps, like Educreations and ShowMe, and it really gives us the ability to kind of look inside our students' mind. What I like about these screencasting apps is not only can I get, find out whether my students know the right or wrong answer, but because there's a voiceover function, it gives me insight into the metacognition of my students. So it's just another example of how powerful the iPad can be in terms of improving student outcomes and improving teaching and learning. So I'm going to now show you an example of a formative assessment or pre-test that my students would have to do the first week of school.
So our essential question for Unit 1 is how are we going to use our knowledge, observations, and experimental data to solve problems as described by the scientific method? This is what I want you to do for your pre-test. You're going to go into EDU Creations on your iPad, and you're going to make me a screencast. You may use visuals in the screencast, and also I want to hear voiceover. You're going to list as many steps in the scientific method that you can remember. And there's one more piece. Also in your screencast, I want you to tell me something that you did over the summer that was scientific and explain to me why. So for instance, don't just tell me, "I ate ice cream." Eating ice cream is scientific, but I'm really interested in the why piece. What made it scientific?
So another great feature about this, this course management tool is that you can actually link apps on the iPad. So now what I would like everyone to do is to click on this Educreations app, and then write for me in the app, how many steps can you remember in the scientific method? And we'll come around to assist. Where are he supposed to be? Is he on task?
No, he was playing a game.
Is he freeing his brain?
He's going to cause me to test. Wait a minute.
Write him up.
You're playing that June game that was on there. We need help.
No, I don't do it.
You do. Oh, okay. And then you see how it links into the app? Okay.
Tells what? Tells stuff. The scientific method tells scientists.
They can insert pictures into it, and they, they report. They get really into it. That I, I don't, you know?
That's very cool.
Were you able to get into it?
No.
Okay. This is why I like books.
Yeah.
So you can, you can doodle in on here, you can send pictures in, report over, so it's like a lot of different possibilities for the kids. I can get to here. This goes back. Then I go here, and this. Oh, no. Yes. And so then you could go in, you could write in the steps. This lets you put pictures in, and then you can also, a lot of different possibilities.
How do you erase it now?
How do you erase it now?
Here we go.
Advanced.
I do need to put a period there, though.
Body of tech needs investigating phenomena.
So then another thing that's really neat about this is that, say I wanted my students to send it to me right away, I could just simply have them take a screenshot, and then there is another... There's another app in here called eBackpack, and eBackpack makes it so assignments can be turned in really quickly to the teacher. So instead of having to collect homework, they can just put it in eBackpack, and then I have the information right away. Another app we use a lot is Socrative. We use that for formative and summative assessment, so that's something that I have embedded into the course. Okay, guys, this is Unit Four. Also, you can insert books into the course, you can put apps in, I have images like links to periodic table. Then also, this is something that I just built towards the end of last year and over the summer, but once my students come into my classroom, that adds a whole other dimension to the course because I can add my students as co-instructors, and they can edit the course with me and submit a lot of their work that we're doing. And another great feature about iTunes U is that it now has added a feature as of July that you can collaborate with other instructors. So I'm actually going to be working with Jenna Rose from the Special Education Department and Jackie Palaio from the Maths Department. We're going to work on creating a problem-solving course. So the ability for Monroe colleagues to collaborate is really wonderful on the iPad. Then also, I have plenty of links in here, links to other resources from other chemistry teachers, links to various, like I have here a link to a chemical bonding rap, just a lot of resources that are all free and now at our students' fingertips. But I didn't just want to stand up here and talk about what I'm doing. So I wanted to show, we have an economics teacher here at the high school, Teresa Weiss. She put her course online last spring. And hers is organized a little bit differently than mine, but she has, you know, all of her assignments, she has her learning goal, links to classroom surveys, various class assignments. So she has a lot of stuff here. You can see she has over like 63 course documents, so she really did a very thorough job implementing this in her classroom. Dr. Gorman, did you want to take questions?
Definitely questions, comments, thoughts.
I have a quick one. In the notes section, during the video, if they have a question about the course or the notes, and they send you a question, instead of just making notes, they'll be able to get an answer now if they have a question on something.
Absolutely. And you bring up a really good question about something really exciting that's going on here in classrooms in Monroe. It's called the notion of the flipped classroom. A lot of teachers are using it. Mrs. Palaio is using it with like her AP Statistics class and her Algebra I classes. Dr. Hibbleheimer is using it with the AP Biology classes. So it's this notion of the work actually starts at home. The students will watch a video, they'll be introduced to the content, right? And then they can watch it at home, they can email the instructor questions ahead of time, so they come into class so much further ahead of the game, which is certainly a great opportunity in like an AP course where the teachers have pressure to cover so much content. Yes?
Who owns the copyright on the iTunes U material that we generate?
The school.
So we could actually profit off it, or is there some sort of exclusion to that?
iTunes University is a public domain, but there are different levels of copyright within based on who can use and access the content. So there's different levels. For example, if we're using certain resources like from a screencast that Courtney made, only Monroe Township students can use it. You get to set the different copyright levels when you're creating the courses. That is definitely a hot issue in education is the different levels of copyright exposure and we're bringing in people to say exactly what level of what copyright boundaries we have in accessing content and in owning content. But the iTunes University philosophy is a free access, and that's why you see thousands of other schools and lots of courses. So it's drawing that content out in this domain for iTunes University. iTunes University is a free domain, a free resource.
I guess over the past few years, we talk about the need for textbooks and textbooks on the iPad. I guess over time, content like this would just replace textbooks. We wouldn't need them at all, and we can use all our content that we write or get content that other people write that are just as good as any textbook we could probably buy.
That's true, and it's a very exciting time to be a teacher. For instance, last year, I had a large number of students that I was preparing for the HESPA examination, and there's not really a great textbook resource that exists for that. So I collaborated with Mrs. Palaio and Ms. Rose, and we created our own iBook. And the students were able to use that, and when we got our test scores back, we found that the creation of our own content was something that we had really a huge improvement in our student outcomes.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Courtney. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well done.
Kathy, while you're transitioning, we'd like to extend an invitation to board members if you'd like to stop by one of the classrooms, Courtney's in particular, to see her implementing this and get greater exposure to how it's working with students. Feel free to do so.
And I learned I need to go back to school. Okay, we will go to Number Eight on the agenda, which is a closed session to interview for the Language Arts Supervisor. I need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Tiorella, Mr. Masters, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Then at this time, the board will go into closed session. I think we're going to take about 45 minutes to do our interviews and board discussion. Thank you. At this time, the board will move back into open session, public session, and go to the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we will adhere to the three minutes.
Good evening, Tom Notstein, 15 Nathaniel Street. With regard to, on Page Eight, Item Z as in zebra, the pay increase for Dr. Jeff Gorman. Could somebody tell me what percentage increase does that represent from his lesson?
I believe it is one and a quarter percent.
Thank you. Let's bear with me. I don't know the number, but on the, under the, I guess, Page 27, under V as in Victor, the contract renewal for Rapid Tuition Child Care Center payment processing. That's also, that's from MECA. Is that also for the enhanced, the enhancement program too?
That's correct. It covers both programs, $7.95 a month processing fee to allow for the online payment method, which is accessible through our website.
I think it's a great idea. Is there any cost per transaction?
No.
Okay, so just a one-time fee. Okay, that's definitely a good thing. With regard to X on 28, are these new trailers, or are these just reapproving existing ones?
The county office requires annual applications for renewal use of temporary classroom units. So all of these units you see here are existing already, and we're just filing a annual application to continue the use as delineated in the resolution. Once every four years, the county has to come out and actually inspect the units.
Okay. Thank you. And with regard to Item 16, the closed session resolution, I see there's going to be some discussion with Plitschka v. Monroe Township Board of Ed. I must have missed something because I thought this was settled a while back.
Mr. Gorsky?
There was a slight change in the settlement agreement stipulated by the judge to remove parts of the confidentiality clause. The agreement remains intact as it was presented before, just a very slight modification, but it does require reapproval.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Speak to the agenda.
Nelson Chen, 4 Ashley Court. I'd just like to ask, how many textbooks are on the iPads now?
I think that Mr. Kaufman will be giving that in his report.
I didn't give you that information ahead of time, did I?
I'm asking a question. You didn't give it to me.
Committee report.
I can't read it from here.
No, committee report when I get there.
You're going to be giving it out to the public? Is that what you're telling me?
We're going to be posting this. Right.
Can somebody answer it then?
We'll do it under committee reports. It's under Mr. Kaufman's committee report.
He said he's going to be posting it.
Going to give that information under his committee report.
Well, posting is different than letting us know, so you're telling us that you're going to let us know?
Telling you now, and then we're going to post it on the website.
Okay, thank you. That was my question. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Seeing no one, we'll close the public forum and go to the approval of minutes for the Public Board of Education meeting of July 17, 2013. Motion and a second. Mr. Masters? Oh, Mr. Poeh? Are you seconding the motion?
No, I'm not seconding.
All right, I need a second before we can ask any questions.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tesler. Ms. Poeh?
Thank you. The very last paragraph in the open session part of the minutes, it needs a correction, I think. It does not reflect what I actually did. And I can send this by email to Mr. Gorsky, but essentially, I think it would be more accurate to say that Mr. Poeh presented a report which had statistics for a comparison of student achievement in the school to other large high schools in Middlesex County and in our DFG. It reads somewhat differently than that, okay? And it's not an insignificant reading, but...
I have no objection. I think that covers the context of the discussion. If you email it to me, we'll put it in, but the board would have to take action on that modification.
Yeah, we would. Anyone else? Then we would have a roll call, or anybody all in favor with the corrections of Mr. Poeh? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions? Mr. Zarneski and Mr. Tiorella. Okay, approval of the meetings for the closed session public meeting of July 17, 2013. Motion and a second.
So moved.
Mr. Poeh?
Second.
Second by Mr. Masters. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Mr. Zarneski and Mr. Tiorella. Okay, now we will go to committee reports. Any committees that need to report this evening? Mr. Kaufman? Curriculum.
Talk about perfect timing. A couple of months ago, I had sent a request over to Jeff to do an overall assessment of all the textbooks that we are currently using at the high school to give us a snapshot of how many of them are electronic, how many of them are not, what's the intended pattern, and where do we think we're going to be in the future. Currently, as you can imagine, there are many, many textbooks here in Monroe Township High School. We have approximately 20 textbooks which are electronic versions at this time, and we're going to post the information that we got this evening up on the website with one change, and I think Jeff, if you can put in there, as we mentioned before, and I'll give you one example, if you will. In the math department, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 textbooks that are electronic versions, and that represents about 80% of all math books that we have here. Now, keep in mind a couple of things. We don't just review textbooks because it's in vogue. We have a schedule, it's all planned, so we're not just going to go convert to electronic version. If the stuff that we have has already, maybe it was acquired recently, it's relatively new, we're not going to just go ahead and chew new meat just because it should be done, right? So there's a methodology by which we're going through this process over time, not to do it just to get numbers and get that ebook or iBook number up as high as we can. It's got to make sense. It's got to be timely, it's got to be when it's appropriate to be done. Additionally, as you saw this evening during the presentation, when we started this adventure down the technology path that we had taken about two years ago now, the overall intent or the vision that we had was to get us to a place where we are cutting the umbilical cord to the published material that we have to, you know, pay for. I mean, publishers earn money to make money, and they have to provide content and materials and stuff for us to use. Based on the demonstration you saw this evening with Ms. Pepe, you know, things like the iBook University or iUniversity where a lot of this content is being published by staff members throughout the world in a free and open market or a public domain is definitely something that we want to embrace and try and move to because all of these things, while they're iBooks or ebooks, they do still have dollar values attached to them. And if we can produce content like we saw this evening for three subject matters in biochemistry, and I forgot the other one already, then that's clearly the way we want to try and leverage the technology the best way we can. And additionally, you know, we don't have electronic or some of the state-of-the-art stuff in every subject matter because we have to basically buy what's out there as a commodity, which is another reason why we want to try and encourage our staff to develop content because if we have a subject matter and there is no electronic version, do we just stop because there is no electronic version? Move forward, and if there isn't content, let's create it and use it in our own school. So there's going to be more to come on the stuff that we're doing as far as textbooks are concerned, but I would ask that if you can, Jeff, at least put some type of representation on the books that we have. What percentage of that is actually like, I think tonight, we heard that 80% of the math books are noted here. For the other subject matters, health and phys ed, and science, and social studies, the books that we have listed here represent 5, 6, 10, 20% of all content textbooks.
We gave you all the digital. Next month, we'll give you everything.
Right.
Are plain versus, non-digital versus digital.
Right.
All right, and then we'll update it and keep it progressive.
That's fine. So, and we also did approve some other curriculum material as well, but we did have a lot of discussion around the iBooks and electronic textbooks and where we expect to be and how we're leveraging this new technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a report? Mr. Tesler?
Thank you, Kathy. We have a pretty extensive personnel report that I'll read. I did it. First thing we did is we conducted interviews for the Language Arts Supervisor, which we just concluded tonight. Item Two is we discussed Jeff Gorman's contract, and we decided to move it up for approval on the agenda tonight, which we will in a little bit. Number Three, we had a security transfer. The security coordinator is recommending the transfer of a security officer from the middle school to the high school. Currently, there are five security guards at the middle school and four day shift at the high school, and in his opinion, it would be better served by doing a transfer over from the middle school to the high school. There was also that Dr. Hamilton shared a plan for providing secretarial support to the elementary child study team members who have expressed significance and concerns about their inability to manage their caseloads and attend to their secretary on clerical needs to that end. Dr. Hamilton, in conjunction with the Personnel Committee, is recommending the transfer of a Transportation Secretary to a secretarial position that would be assigned to each of the elementary schools on a rotational basis starting September 1st. Additionally, there will be a separate assignment for curriculums... Additionally, there will be a separate assignment for Curriculum Instruction Secretary two days a week to provide support to district supervisors in light of the increase in teacher evaluations as a result of the new laws coming to effect this year, and we all supported that recommendation. Okay. Where do we... Sorry. Oh, I just lost my place. Substitute bus driver rate. Dr. Hamilton brought a concern to the committee by raising transportation, by raised by the Transportation Supervisor that there's a disparity with securing substitute bus drivers on a daily basis because of rate of pay. We are basically on the low of the totem pole compared to other districts, so it's, we have a hard time getting substitute bus drivers in our district. So, it's recommended to raise that from eleven fifty an hour to seven fifty an hour, which is an average of what other districts are doing in the area. We also had our revision of a job description for the Secretary that we just talked about. And last but not least, we have been interviewing quite long for an HR position. After three different postings for an HR position, we haven't found a suitable candidate, and it was recommended that the board considered a HR Director, particularly in view of new laws governing teacher evaluations. We all in the committee had some concerns about increasing administrative costs and would like the administration to review how additional costs could be absorbed from other expenditures in the area, so we do not have to, we can have a person in this job that we need, but not increase costs. So, there have been no, we're not gonna be moving forward at this time, and we're gonna be discussing that further at the next committee meeting. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Tesler. Does anyone else have a report that they need? Nobody. Okay, then we will go to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hamilton?
Okay. Good evening, all. Before we get into my actual report, I'd like to share some information with the board. In a recent edition of Inside New Jersey Magazine, which was published as part of the Newark Star-Ledger, Monroe Township High School exhibited encouraging results in this year's rankings of New Jersey top high schools. The researchers have used a new proprietary formula as schools were evaluated over a four-year period, and that four-year analysis looked at a growth model. During this time, Monroe High School, as well as Monroe, other schools in our district, of course, had to endure the incredible enrollment growth, portable classrooms, and the prospect of realignment due to the new high school and the reconstruction of our elementary and middle schools. And each school rating was looked at by the New Jersey Department of Education, and those results were based on SAT scores, HSPS results in Language Arts and Math, and they were weighted accordingly. Letter grades were then assigned ranging from A to D in descending order. In addition, medium home values were also calculated to determine a school's rating using this new score. Monroe Township High School's scores rose twenty-six point three points since two thousand and eight, from three hundred and eight point four to three hundred and thirty-six point seven, growth percentile of nine point two percent growth. This has enabled Monroe High School to move to a rating of a B, characterized as a school rising to the top, so we're very, very proud of that. Our test scores, as well as our other academic growth, were above the average, and certainly the administrative team at the high school and the faculty continue to strive to increase our scores. And it should also be noted that among Middlesex County high schools, the twenty-eight schools, including the Vocational and Academy High School, Monroe ranked number seven. So, I know this has been the subject of considerable debate in the past about Monroe's rating on that school report, and I am proud to say that we are now identified as a school on the rise.
Good news.
That is very good news. Thank you. The MECA report is listed in the agenda, and during the Board President's Report, she'll share a little more information about the fiscal status of MECA, but our enrollment currently is twenty-nine, and there is a waiting list for their early enrichment program. Our current enrollment is at forty. So, moving on to our personnel report, Madam Board President and members of the board, it is recommended by the Superintendent that Personnel Action Items A through FF be approved by roll call vote, and please note a change in Item EE. It currently reads the effective date for the transfer of Carol Constantino as nine one. I'd like to make that date eight twenty-six. That would be, thank you.
Moved by Mr. Chiarella.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Braverman. Mr. Chiarella. Okay. Any comments or questions for the Superintendent? Mr. Prezioso?
On Personnel Items A to G, there's quite a few resignations. Can you tell me what that's about? Oh. Yeah, I think so.
That's kinda hard to answer because they vary. One is a retirement due to health that I can recall. Another is a retirement due to the care of a sick spouse. Another is a resignation as a result of a maternity leave that I did not approve because the person wasn't eligible for leave, so she subsequently resigned. Another took an administrative position in another district, and the others I can't speak of off the top of my head.
None of them were asked, except for that one, right?
Say that again.
They weren't asked to leave.
That is correct.
And also?
Mr. Prezioso, could you use the microphone?
Item O to X. Any of those new hires?
O through X.
Yes.
New hires meaning new to these positions or new to the district?
Well, we okayed a list of seventeen new hires not too long ago.
No, these are members who are eligible, or who have either applied for these additional assignments, or... All of them, actually, have applied for an additional assignment, so they're all existing staff.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Mr. Gorsky?
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes, except on Item DD. I'm voting no on Peter Ruckdessel, however how the name is pronounced.
Mr. Poy, would you repeat the letter, please?
It's Item DD.
DD. So noted. Mr. Prezioso?
Yes on everything but Item Z.
It's a no on Z. So noted. Mr. Tesler?
Yes, recuse on FF.
FF?
FF.
He's accusing FF.
So noted. Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Items A through FF passes.
Thank you.
Reading into the record, Item GG. It is recommended by the Superintendent that Dr. Kelly Rozell be appointed as the District Pre-K-12 Supervisor of Language Arts and Rural Languages at a salary of one hundred and six thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars, plus a degree differential of five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, effective no later than October fourth, two thousand and fourteen, through June... I'm sorry, no later than October first, two thousand and thirteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
So moved.
Mr. Braverman and Mr. Chiarella, any comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to Board Action Item, I will read this in two parts. Note, I am pulling Item I from Board Action since that is listed for discussion in closed session. So, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the Superintendent that Board Action Items A through H and J through K be approved by roll call vote.
So moved. Second?
So moved by Mr. Chiarella, second by Mr. Masters. Any comments or questions from board members? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
I have a comment.
Oh, Mr. Masters?
Advertising on school property, Policy six one, six three. I just wanna renew my... Trying to find my notes, I'm sorry. Disagreement with some of the wording in that, based on one of the policy meetings. Again, I just wanna make sure, because I was under a different assumption when we discussed this, about the wording that says "in and on" school buildings. I thought we were moving toward, or moving away from that wording, and now I see it back in the policy document, which is fine, but again, I'm very uncomfortable with having policy that says it's okay, the school board may put advertising in and on the school buildings, so...
Mr. Gorsky?
Madam. Mr. Masters? After deliberation at that policy committee meeting, I believe that the committee decided to leave that language intact with the understanding that any future recommendations for advertising would still have to be brought back to the committee and the board as a resolution for full board, for majority board support. So, this language is basically a permission to go ahead and allow something to be brought back to the board at a later time.
And I'm still uncomfortable with it.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Madam President?
Mr. Poy?
Just a couple of comments on some of the policies, and I do agree with Mr. Masters on the advertising. I would prefer to see that our policies exclude advertising on the school building. This way, it's cut and dry. I would not look forward to the day when we have signs hanging outside our, on our buildings, regardless of how much money they might be bringing in. But I wanted to speak to the policy that deals with the automatic external defibrillators, and as you may recall during the policy discussion, I had strongly urged that our district look into making sure that we have adequate AEDs and that those AEDs be available during outside practices by our various teams. We never know when an athlete is likely to get struck in the chest by a baseball, hardball, lacrosse stick, hockey stick, whatever it may be, and the rhythm of the heart is interrupted. But I understand that that is going to be discussed and explored, and I think that's a good direction for us to move in for the safety of our youngsters, as well as protecting the district from potential lawsuits. The other item, I guess it would be under Regulation twenty-four thirty-two point two, which deals with the medical examination to determine fitness for athletics. Once again, I would just like to inform the entire board that I strongly push for this district to make sure that all of our athletes have a pre-screening in terms of their head injury or any potential injury to the brain, since concussions, when they do that examination, it's always good to have a baseline to compare it to. So, I would, I'm basically sharing this with the, with my fellow members of the board, and even though it's not in the policy, I would strongly urge that we move in that direction in the future. And this is, once again, to protect our students in the event that they do suffer a brain concussion. It's very, very helpful when you have a baseline to compare the test results to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tesler?
Just kinda on the same topic, going back to the AED, does the, does the policy require that if teams travel or practice to an outside facility, like an outside gym or something, that that gym must have an AED in it?
I believe it does. I have a copy of the policy that I will pull up for you.
Fifty-three hundred.
The policy reads, "A team coach, licensed athletic director, or other designated staff member, if there is no coach or licensed athletic director who is present during athletic events or team practices, shall be trained in cardiopulmonary resuscitation and the use of the AED in accordance with the provisions of NJSA two colon six two A dash twenty-five lower A."
So, if a team goes to an away football game or to an outside gym, do they bring the AED with them?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Braverman? Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Yes, except Item J, Policy six one, six three.
So noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Poy?
Yes, except Item J, Policy six one, six three.
So noted. Mr. Prezioso?
Yes on everything but Item J, six one, six three. No.
Mr. Tesler?
Ditto. Same thing.
You're going to say no to six one, six three?
Correct.
Okay.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
I'm gonna do the same thing. Yes to everything but no to Policy six one, six three.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through L passes, with the exception of J, six one, six three.
Does that conclude your report?
I'm sorry. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. We will go to the Business Administrators' Report. Mr. Gorsky?
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through double A be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, and second by Mr. Braverman. Is there any comments or questions for Mr. Gorsky? Seeing none, we will go have a roll call.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes, except I recuse myself on Items Q and T.
Q and T.
So noted. Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes on everything, and I think I need to recuse myself on, I believe it's Q.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through double A passes, and I would just like to thank Mr. Tesler, who filled in in Ms. Antelis's unexpected absence and Board President's absence to do an audit of the bill list this month. He met with Lori Allen and I, and would've made Mr. Larry proud the way he went through the bill list.
Thank you very much.
And made some wonderful recommendations that we'll take into consideration.
Thank you.
It's an exciting opportunity.
Yes, it is.
And that concludes your report.
That concludes my report.
Okay, at this time, at this time, we'll go to the Board President's Report, and I have a few things that I would like to report this evening. The first is, my Board President's Report is in regard to some concerns that was raised by a member of the public at the July seventeenth Board of Education meeting during the second public forum, and I'd like to clarify those concerns so that the public has a better understanding of how the board conducts business. The first issue concerns a public discussion of the salary increase for the Superintendent. An increase in the Superintendent's salary is directly related to the Superintendent's evaluation. As such, it cannot be discussed in public, nor should the board go into the evaluative reasons for any salary increase. Although it is required by law that an increase is to be approved by the Board of Education at a public meeting, it is considered a personnel item between the Superintendent and the members of the Board of Education, and must be discussed in closed session. As with any other item on the agenda, a member of the public may comment on the increase, but the board members may not. Any comments made by the board members in public would be considered negotiating in public, and that is not allowed. public, and that is not allowed. Therefore, the process that we have followed this year in regard to the superintendent evaluation and subsequent increase has been, and in the past, has been done correctly. The second item concerns following Robert's Rules of Order and a motion to table. At the last board meeting, there was a motion made by a member of the Board of Education, and second by another member. That motion that was made was considered a main motion. During deliberation, a motion was made to table the discussion until the full board meets at a retreat at a future date. The motion to table was acted on before the main motion. The member of the public felt that I had handled the motions inappropriately and did not follow Robert's Rules of Order. After checking with Robert's Rules of Order twice, and consulting with our board attorney, it was determined that the manner in which the motions were handled were correct. The motion to table is a priority motion, which is acted upon first, and requires the support of the majority of members present to pass. I pride myself in making sure that the board follows Robert's Rules of Order to the best of my ability, and if I have a doubt or any concern about how things are being handled, I usually would check with Mr. Gorski and Dr. Hamilton to make sure that it's done right, before proceeding with any, any board action. So I hope that clarifies those issues. I have an update on MECA. The financial statement, and Mr. Gorski, you can let me know if I'm not correct. The financial statement for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, found that MECA program was at a loss of two hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and six cents. Good news is that MECA now has an enrollment of thirty-one children, which is two more than Dr. Hamilton.
Changes every day.
Since the, since the, the agenda was written, we've had two more students, and it's up from fourteen last year. And we said when we started this program, and we implemented it, that would it take at least a year or two for it to become self-sustaining? So we're happy that after one year, we have almost doubled our enrollment, and we continue to add children to that program. The Early Childhood Education Program, or the Kindergarten Program, has forty students in it, twenty in the morning program, twenty in the afternoon, and there's a waiting list of others who would like to attend this program. We have received deposits from all MECA children and all students attending the ECE program. It is expected that these two programs will be running at a profit starting in September, when we get not just the deposits, but a regular income from those programs. We will be analyzing these programs during the next few months to make sure that the numbers are stable, and it is expected that in January of two thousand and fourteen, a repayment plan will begin, which will pay back the two hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and six cents back to the Board of Education. And that will go through the Finance Committee, they will talk about how they want to repay, and come up with a monthly figure, and that will be approved by the full board. And probably within the next few months, that will happen. So that is MECA. And the last thing I have is an update, and was, was I correct with all those figures with the MECA?
Yes. Just one point of correction, you did a fantastic job with the financial representations. The, the loan is three hundred and nine thousand, twenty-nine dollars, eleven cents as of June thirtieth, thirteen.
Okay.
The loss as of June thirtieth, thirteen, was two hundred and sixteen thousand, three eighty-five. And as you mentioned, it's that loan that is going to be immediately addressed by members of the Board of Ed. One, one other thing that I would just like to divulge on that, that I spoke with Dr. Hamilton about earlier, this is the first year of operations for MECA, and as we represented, comparing this to East Brunswick's model when they started a childcare program, they had a similar loss in their first year, and had a loss in their second year, and they became profitable in their third year. This was all disclosed at the inception of this program. This loss, in my opinion, was expected, but we have some numbers now on deposits for enrollment, that have shown that, starting in September, this should turn the corner. This should be profitable next year, and should address the loan quickly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gorski. An update on S twenty-three oh seven, and this is from Mr. Jim Hooker, Chief of Staff for Senator Greenstein. S twenty-three oh seven, as everybody knows, was heard by the Senate Budget and Appropriations Committee on June thirteenth, and released from the committee by an eight to three vote in support. The senator is in the process of sending a letter to each of the other thirty-nine senators requesting their support of the bill. She is also reaching out to Acting Education Commissioner Christopher Serf for a meeting in regard to this matter, and I believe the Senate is on recess at this moment. There is also a corresponding bill in the Assembly, A three four seven eight, and we received an update on that from Ms. Elizabeth Myers, Chief of Staff for Assemblyman Wayne D'Angelo. At this time, the Assembly is also in summer recess, but Assemblyman D'Angelo is pushing for the bill to be posted when the schedule of committee hearings is determined. It is the Assembly Speaker, along with the committee chairs, who decide if a bill is to be posted or not. So when the schedule of hearings is received, we will be getting an update by Assemblyman D'Angelo's office, and we hope that we will be on that schedule. So at this moment, both bills are still in their respective committees, and that concludes the Board President's Report. So at this time, we will go to other board business. Is there any other business from any member of the Board of Education? Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to congratulate our cheerleaders. I'm very proud of you, and I think that all of Monroe is proud of you for winning and making us proud, so thank you. And one of the other things I want to bring up, too, is just that tonight, or today, is Mr. Masters' anniversary. And his, not only is he here on his anniversary, but so is his wife. So congratulations. She is definitely his better half. Got to know Lou pretty well after, over the last three years, and, but it really does speak to his dedication to the, to our community, that he's here tonight.
Thank you.
I don't know that my wife would allow me to be here on my anniversary. One of the, one of the things here that I want to bring up is with regards to the Cultural Arts Commission, and our policy regarding the billing of cultural arts. I'm not looking to override our policy, I'm just looking to amend something, you know, the, the current billing, because I believe that there are a couple of things that happened that we, we could have done better as a board. One, I think, was inform the township that we were changing the criteria of tiering, and that we, you know, where we were putting cultural arts in that, in the new tier, and then the amount of money that that would, that they would be charged in that new tier for using our services. One of the, one of the things that I just want to make sure that everyone understands is that the, we're one town, you know, that we're, whether we charge the township X amount of dollars today, or they charge us for, for things, it's coming out of our taxpayers' pockets, and that's something that we have to remember. So it's not an us against them thing, but I think that in this case, in order to address what I think was a deficiency on our part, I'd like to make a motion to amend the amount that we currently are charging them, and I have a motion in front of me that I'd like to read, and then I'd like to, you know, I'd like to hear from, from everyone else. I think that the, you know, Cultural Arts Commission is, is a, a great thing for our community. I think that in, you know, civil society, that the arts are very important for, for, not only for us, but for our children, and I think, and I just think it's important to make sure that, 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 that the program still exists, and that they can still operate. And then going forward, that they, they have ample notice now of, of our rate change, and then we can go forward and charge them accordingly. So the motion is, it is recommended to the Board of Education, that the Board of Education approve the reduction of amounts due from the Township of Monroe Cultural Arts Commission on the board's aggregate invoices for the commission's use of buildings in the Monroe Township School District, from the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eight cents, to the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty, seven hundred and forty dollars and thirty-eight cents. In the best interest of the students and taxpayers of the Monroe Township School District, the Board President and the Business Administrator slash Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the board.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kaufman? Is there any comments or questions? Mr. Tesler?
Just some questions for clarification. Do I understand what happened is, and I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, because, you know, probably a little more maybe familiar with the issue than I am, is that whatever event this invoice represented, you know, we sent the paperwork to the town, they didn't realize about the, the updated policy, so they didn't realize, you know, what amounts was going to be due, and so I guess, you know, maybe, maybe they should have read it carefully, but what we probably should have done is put some kind of cover letter updating our policies on it. So I know in, in my business, any, every time we do some kind of rate change, we don't, you know, necessarily stick it in the fine print, we also send a detailed letter notifying whoever our customers are that this is going to change, so we probably may, should have been a little more clear on that. So I guess that's probably what happened, something like that. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think that's right.
So, so what, when, and moving forward, though, the township is going to be required to adhere to the new policy, is that correct?
For the new rate changes.
The new rate change.
A lesson learned for the Board of Education.
Okay, you know, kind of shame on us both ways, but like you said, I think, you know, we need to work together with the town, and, you know, we're one, we need to, you know, do what's right for our customer, because they were the customer in our end, but, so I think there may have been some mistakes in both parts.
Mr. Braverman?
Well, you know, forgive me if I ramble a little bit. This started about three months ago, at a policy committee meeting. In attendance was Doug Poy, Anthony Prezioso, Kathy Kay, myself, Dr. Hamilton, and Mike Gorski. In the audience was, uh, Michelle Armino, and some man that I'm not familiar with. We were visited by two council persons. Councilman Riggs, I think, was the spokesman for the two of them. And I think he opened his, and tell me if I'm wrong, he opened his statement by saying, "We were broadsided. We didn't expect to spend this much money on such and such a program." Well, we had quite a discussion that night, and we found that every time a use of building form is sent out, the fees are attached to it. So if you were hit broadsided, because you didn't know the fees, somebody didn't do due diligence. Well, we voted to collect the whole, whole money that was due. Mike Gorski, our Business Administrator, I think, reported that to Wayne Hamilton. And I know I'm speaking, and this is probably going to go nowheres, because I understand that many of you were contacted by the local politicians, and told if you didn't turn this around, they would not help us get property for a new school, they would not work with us as jointly and as, as cordially as they always have. Well, let's see how cordially they have always worked with us. For example, the first time we put up the high school, it was an eighty-five million dollar referendum, which included renovations to our other buildings. I never heard a local politician come out and support that referendum. However, they said, "We'll get you the high school in the park for a dollar." That was fantastic. So the eighty-five million dollar high school referendum cost us a hundred and twenty-five million, and we have a school that we're sitting in that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet smaller than it should have been. When we opened this school building, we were charged a million and a half dollars by this township to hook up to the utilities. We paid our bills, because that's what you do, you man up. When we built our elementary schools, we paid a half a million dollars each to hook up to the utilities, to the township. We paid our bills, because we were billed, and that's what you're supposed to do, you man up, and you're be honorable, and you do the right thing. I can't believe that ten thousand dollars for this township was such an immense amount of money that they couldn't afford. I just can't believe it. I think it was more than the ten thousand dollars, it was an ego, it was an ego trip by the local politicians. And I guess they win, because most of you will vote for this motion. But I just had to get that off my chest. I, one more thing, I think school law eighteen A says that our taxes for our budget are supposed to be made quarterly. This township pays it monthly. So on a hundred million dollars, they get a float of our money, and probably earn about a million dollars from our money. So I guess we do work very cordially with the township. We're partners in everything we do. We open up our wallet, and they put their hand in it. So I just had to get that off my mind. Thank you.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just want to just, you can say anything you want. Speak to a couple of these things. One is that, you know, the, the school is much smaller, not because of the township, the school is much smaller because the first bond referendum was voted down by the people. And, and then this was the alternative. So this is, this is how we ended up here, and, and the township, and the mayor helped us get the land for the high school. They also helped us get the land for Oak Tree, and that saved us millions of dollars. So I think those are things that we have to remember. Plus, there are things that, you know, we're talking about paying our fair share and things like that. We decided as a board, although I voted against it, and so did Mr. Masters, to move, and, and so did Mr. Klein, to, we voted not to move the election to November. The full board voted to move it to November, and they could have charged us for that, which they decided not to do. And that probably could have been, I imagine, could be up to twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars. So I think there are a lot of places where we, we do work together, and where the, we've had a beneficial relationship. I just think that with this, this is the Cultural Arts Commission, I think that this is a, you know, this is something totally different. They hadn't budgeted for this. Each, each commission is allotted a certain amount of budget, and even though in, in the broad scheme of things, it may seem like ten thousand dollars isn't a lot, but for a specific commission, it could be, because it's their budget. And if they don't, if they don't have the money in their budget, then they have to either cut programs, or shows, or whatever, and I just think that this is the right thing to do.
Anyone else? Mr. Masters?
Just, Mike, is it true, and I'm not second guessing, about the, moving the election and the cost, is that a, or how much was that?
Yes, to add to Mr. Chiarella's comment, when the election was moved to November, it, the costs were, per law, to be shared with the township. And an election costs about sixty thousand dollars. Offhand, I don't know what our share would be, but I think Mr. Chiarella's estimate of twenty thousand dollars is probably reasonable.
Which we haven't paid?
Which we have not been invoiced for, and, you know, it's several months since the election now.
Mr. Prezioso?
Getting a bill for that?
Just going to say, thanks.
You know, our fiscal year's closed out, the election was back in November. I have no notification that a bill is forthcoming.
Anyone else?
It doesn't matter, point.
Mr. Kaufman?
I can't speak for everybody, I can only speak for me, just to answer Marvin's question. Nobody from the township or any of the administrators called me and asked me to support or not support it, so I just want to get that off the table. The other thing is that Ken was mentioning before, it's sort of like, you know, you have twenty bucks, you have maybe fifteen dollars in one pocket, and five dollars in the other, and it's, you know, that's what you have, and it's a matter of moving money from your left pocket to your right pocket. It's not like it's other income coming into the district, it's not like it's an outside corporation that's going to be giving us money. I think as we delineated before, we probably could have done a better job of disclosing the differentials in the, in the new pricing schema, which we, you know, you learn and you move forward. you move forward. And as we talked about before, you know, there could have been other costs related to charging and moving from the election from one point to the other, and, you know, it kind of all washes out in the end. But I did want to also mention one thing, you know, because we bring it up all the time about building this high school in here, and, and what was then and what was today. It would have been nice, we would have saved a whole lot of time. We might have saved, I don't know, six years, had the first referendum passed. I know I would have probably at least had one kid graduate from the new high school instead of none, so it would have been great as far as time, for that time. But I think hindsight being 2020, I really enjoy the fact that the high school is located right next to the middle school, so that we wouldn't have things like replication of a athletics field for the football, because that's another thing that was on the plan for the other location. It would have needed another stadium over there, because it's the other side of town. So overall, I think while it would have been nice if the first one went, I think fiscally and in the overall architecture of, of being able to have, you know, one athletic field, one baseball field, share the resources between the campuses, I think we all kind of made out in the end, and I think everybody would have wanted it to happen faster, but it didn't, so here we are. But nobody can deny one thing, that the administration was completely behind this end product that we're sending in today. And I have to, you know, give credit where credit's due. A lot of people spoke, both residents, administrators from the school, and administrators from the, from the township, when we went to the freeholders' meetings and all the other state meetings. So I don't think it has anything to do with that. I think I'd rather focus on what's here and now, and what we said before about how we can improve our process was, was spoken by all, and that's where I stand.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have a question. What is the actual relationship or affiliation between the Cultural Arts Commission and our municipal government? Are they an agent of, are they, are they?
The commission falls under the municipal government.
So, so it's part of that government, then?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And are all of their, the events that they have here, I would assume that they're open to all the residents, at, at the beginning, you know, when the event first gets advertised and tickets are available for sale, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that anyone can attend those events the moment the event becomes available?
Yes, and I believe it's open to all students for free.
Okay. Now, if Mr. Chiarella's motion is, it passes tonight, my question is, what does this mean going forward in terms of the fees that the Cultural Arts Commission would be paying, let's say for this coming school year?
They, I believe that they have already said that they would honor the fee schedule going forward. I sent, since these bills, they have paid their other bills, right? They have paid, but this bill fell under like a, they, they weren't sure, because they, they got bills without the revised fee schedule, or they did not notice the revised fee schedule. We did not, I look at it this way, if you get a building use form every month, and you're filling something out, and you're filling it out again, you don't always look to read to see if there's anything new in it, you just assume it's the same fee schedule. It might have been more appropriate if the Board of Education, like, I don't know, Mr. Masters, had said if we had, or maybe Mr. Tesler, if we had written a letter and told everybody that we have a new fee schedule, it probably would have been more appropriate on our part to do have done that.
Okay, but, but...
They, they are willing to move ahead and pay the appropriate fees based on the utilage of whatever rooms or building they're using.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So this is just a one-time deal?
Yes.
I know, that's, let's, let's talk turkey.
That's correct.
It's a one-time deal. Okay, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Braverman?
No.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso?
In the interest of our children and our taxpayers, I vote yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other Board of Education business from any other member?
I would like to report on the subcommittee of the Planning Board.
Mr. Poy?
The, the Planning Board formed a subcommittee to, to look into the impact of new developments in the township on the schools of Monroe. And we had our first meeting on August the 6th. At that meeting were, were the following people, Mark Remsa, John Riggs, John Convery, Wayne Hamilton, Mark Razimovic, and David Rothman, who I believe is the actual chair of the Planning Board, but he was on vacation. The decision was that the committee would, or that three letters will be sent to potential demographers, but none of those demographers receiving the letters would be the one used by our current Board of Education, or in the, the prior demographer that we once used, nor would they be the demographer used by the developer. They wanted a completely independent demographer to get an independent study on the impact of these developments on the schools. The study will include two developments. Both of them are being developed by the same developer, Inglewood Properties. One development is the marketplace, referred to as the Marketplace at Monroe, which is down on Route 33 and Perrineville Road, and the other one is the Villages at Monroe, which is up on Mount Mills Road. I, I inquired about when we might anticipate this study being completed, and they're anticipating it will be completed possibly by late September, early October. The developer used Richard Redding Associates of Princeton to do the impact study of both projects, and Redding Associates actually, in you, reading through the documents, you find that what they were using are procedures that were recommended in a 2006 study done by the Center for Urban Policy Research of Rutgers University. The Marketplace on Route 33 is, is calling for 749 housing units. They will all be townhouses, condos, or apartments. They're all attached dwellings. Of those 749 units, 150 would be affordable housing. And the projected number of school-aged children would be 237. But they did request that they make the assumption that all of the children would be attending the public schools of Monroe, and if that were the case, then we could anticipate, according to the developer's demographer, we could anticipate 270 students for the school system. The smaller development, the Villages on Mount Mills, that would contain 522 housing units. Once again, all of these would be townhouses, condos, or apartments. And of those, 79 would be affordable housing. And the projected number of students would either be 80, or if all of the students were attending our schools, then it would be 94. So we're looking, just based on those two developments alone, we're looking at a potential increase in, in student enrollment of something like 334 students, possibly. Now, this does not include, this does not include other developments that are single-family homes, like the Orchards, Monroe Chase, being developed by Toll Brothers, and I'm sure there's several others that, that I'm, I'm not on top of. So as I read through the documents, I, and I looked at, at the figures and the calculations, it dawned on me that the, the impact study only is looking at the cost of educating those students, as if we had adequate space to provide for them. And so I did send an email to all the members of the subcommittee, saying that, that this is going to be a false impact, if that's all they look at, that they also need to look at, do we have the space for these kids? Because once you start talking about 300 or so children coming into the school system, some rather simple mathematics will, will tell you that you're going to need possibly 14 to 18 additional classrooms. The high school is already at capacity, the middle school, we're getting a few extra classrooms there, but then it'll probably be at capacity. Some of our elementary schools, I know, are already at capacity. Woodland, I don't think, can take too many more kids, they're bursting at the seams up there. So there is the, that, that hidden impact of building needs. And I did get a, a response from Mr. Rothman, who, who, as I said, I believe he chairs the Planning Board, and he agrees that these impact studies need to include both the daily cost of educating these additional children, as well as the need for additional classroom space. So I was very, very encouraged by that. And he, he even went further to say that very possibly what this subcommittee ends up doing could likely be the model for all future developments in Monroe, which I think would be a good sign. And I was, I was very encouraged by that. So, so right now, we, we don't know exactly what the, the other demographer is going to find. However, because of the methods that were used by the demographer that the developer used, I, I don't know if we're going to find a big change in this, in these results. But it, it's still, it's going to be an impact, no question about it. I, I would add that these developments are not going to happen overnight, you know, it takes a while from, from putting the shovel in the ground. And the one up on Mount Mills, I understand from the time the shovel goes in the dirt, it could be something like five years before it's totally built out. The one down on 33, which is much, much larger, I have no idea, some of the numbers that I were, I was hearing tossed around was that sometimes a development like that, from the, from the initial stage of the request for approval, until it actually gets accomplished, it can run anywhere from eight to 10 years. So it's not as if this is going to hit us overnight, but nevertheless, it's still going to hit us, and we do have other, other communities going up in the, in the township.
Thank you. Mr. Masters?
You're stealing my thunder. I'm giving my Mark Klein report, and you're, you're kind of, yeah, that, it's that coefficient they use, they use like, it's for every three units, one kid, or something like that, which was actually better than the original builder, that was the first council meeting. He said, I think, every eight units would have one child, which is completely unrealistic. There's another coefficient, it's a three-quarter coefficient, and that's the one I've been using, that's the one that Town Council talks about, previously before this new development. We were about a 10, just, just the cost to educate, it was about 10 to 11 million dollars. That new development on 33 will balloon that to almost 18 million plus, depending on coefficient. If you use some of the other coefficients, the one or twos, we're talking 30, 30-plus million dollars, just in cost of education, that Mike's going to have to find somewhere. And that's not talking about building a school, that's if we cram them all into trailers in every classroom we have. Trailers, I said that word.
Anyone else from the board?
It is a huge, huge...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that's a...
Nope, I thought you were going to finish. Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was listening to all the statistics, and it's kind of amazing. Mr. Poy, the, the development that's going on 33, how many units are they projecting there?
I think it's 729.
Okay, 729, so, excuse me, so, I'll go 800.
How about 750?
I'll go 800. 800 is to 200 students for Route 33, right? Keep me honest. That's what they said, about 200 and something.
237.
Okay, 200, no, I don't need that. 800 is to 200 students for Route 33, and 500 is to 85 for the one on Mount Mills? And it's the same demographer?
But there might be, there might be a different mix of the type of unit.
Yes.
Really?
They, it's crazy, these numbers. It's like the, the calculation for funding.
Well, some are one-bedroom apartments and things like that.
The, the, the dwellings contain a different number of bedrooms. The one down on 33 has some three-bedroom units. I don't think there's any three-bedroom units up on Mount Mills. You know, I, I'd have to look at that particular, but that's what accounts for that difference.
And when they do that coefficient calculations, they figure that three-bedroom units is going to only be for a husband and a wife, that there's no family in there? I'm just, I'm just trying to work this out in my head, or...
Couple of puppies.
If they have a one-bedroom apartment, that one-bedroom apartments will never house any students, that it would only be a husband and a wife. I'm just, I'm just trying to find what planet they're from.
Remember what they said about apartments, people in apartments don't have kids or something?
Mr. Masters?
I'm sorry, I'm...
Oh, you're...
I'm sorry. I'm out of control tonight.
Just for, just to give or take a couple of people, the middle school, the, what? The capacity at the middle school is 1,200 students, and we're already over 1,400 at the middle school. The capacity at the high school is 1,800 students, and we're over 1,900 right now. I don't know where we're going to put these kids.
Madam President.
Who, Mr.?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, I just want to thank Mr. Poy for taking an active role in this, and then reporting back to us, because I know that takes a lot of time and effort, but thank you.
Anyone else? Mr.?
Just one question, I'd like to thank you also, but did the committee that you're attending raise any concerns about those numbers, that they may be on the low side, or you're just going to, you know, we're going to see what the new demographer's report says?
Well, when, when the first project came up for the initial approval, that's when the, the Planning Board decided that they needed to go for an independent, an independent study in terms of the school impact, because they, they doubted those low numbers. And all I'm saying is, they, they used procedures and methods that had been developed by the, the Center for Urban Planning out of Rutgers University, which would have no interest one way or the other. They use that, and it, it seems to be somewhat the standard way that they do that these days. And it does take into account the type of dwelling unit, how many bedrooms it has, as well as the cost of the unit. And the coefficient that, that, that Mr. Masters was referring to, those coefficients change according to the type of dwelling that it is.
Right, of, of an apartment versus a multi-bedroom townhouse and things like that?
That's right, yes.
Okay, because it just seems to me that these type of housing would attract families just starting, maybe don't have kids in, in, in school yet, but seems to me that with the cost of housing these days, this would be very attractive for families starting out, you know, with young children ready to go to school.
Mr., Mr., yeah, because we have a closed session with our attorney.
I know, I'm sorry, one last thing. I know, I got it. So, so when the assessments are done, and if we use their numbers, and it comes out to, let's say, 300 new students between the combined different places, because we know the students are ultimately going to wind up in the middle school and the high school, and the numbers are big, because they're already big at their numbers, if we do our own study, they're probably going to be bigger, after the assessment is done, what's the committee going to do? What's the, what's the end result? Are they going to recommend back to the township that they can't do it, because our current infrastructure cannot support it? What's Plan B?
Good question. I, I don't have an answer.
Okay. Anything else for other board business? Okay, seeing none, we are going to 16, closed session resolution.
Can I do the public first?
No, 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 we'll do it after the, because we don't want to have three. And it should only last about a half an hour. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 and JSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21 to discuss the following subjects. This discussion to be held in closed session will be about pending litigation in which the board is a party. Specifically, the board will discuss Politev versus Monroe Township Board of Education, New Jersey Superior Court, Law Division, Docket Number MITL 185-11, and in the matter of the tenure hearing of Anne Marie George, School District of the Township of Monroe, Middlesex County, Agency Docket Number 126-6/13. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for the discussion, discussion, discussing these matters in closed session no longer exists. We'll also be discussing personnel, employee 001289 and employee number 001217. Again, the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved.
Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Second, Mr.? Second, Mr. Tesler. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions? And then at this time, the Board will move back into closed session. Hopefully, we'll be out of here within a half an hour. At this time, the Board will move back into closed session. I believe Dr. Hamilton...
Move back into public session.
Back into public session. It's late, and Dr. Hamilton has a few motions he needs to read, and then we will go to the public forum.
Okay, beginning with... Board Action Item I. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the suspension with pay of teaching staff member employee number 001217 effective September 3, 2013. This suspension shall continue at least until such time as the Board has received notification regarding the disposition of a pending matter involving employee 001217, and the Board has considered the Superintendent's further recommendations related to employee number 001217's employment by the Board. The Superintendent and the Business Administrative Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board of Education.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella? And a tie. I'll give it to Mr. Masters. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso.
He said yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz. Madam Board President, motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Board Action Item M, like Michael. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize Dr. Richard Levine to provide employee training to teaching staff member employee number 1289 at a cost not to exceed $600. The Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board.
Second.
Masters? Tesler? Comments, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso. Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz. Madam Board President, motion unanimously passes.
Item N under Board Action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the transfer of teaching staff member employee number 1289 to the position of math teacher at Monroe Township Middle School for the 2013-2014 school year. The Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrative Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board.
Second.
Chiarella? Masters? Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz. Madam Board President, motion unanimously passes.
Board Action Item O. Whereas, the Superintendent of School has recommended that the Monroe Township Board of Education withhold employee number 1289's employment and adjustment increments for the 2013-2014 school year due to the reasons set forth in the Superintendent's letter dated August 16, 2013 to employee number 1289, advising him of the Superintendent's recommendation to withhold his increments end. Whereas, following due consideration, the Board agrees with the recommendation of the Superintendent and the reasons therefore. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education employee number 1289's employment and adjustment increments for the 2013-2014 school year shall be withheld so that his 2013-2014 shall be fixed... salary shall be fixed at $79,189 plus $1,750, which is the same as his salary for the 2012-2013 school year. And be it further resolved that employee number 1289 is hereby directed to attend employee training prior to his return to the classroom for the 2013-2014 school year. And be it further resolved that within 10 days of the date of this resolution is approved by the Board, the Superintendent hereby is directed to provide employee number 1289 with a copy of this resolution, notifying him that his employment and adjustment increments have been withheld.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella? Mr. Tesler? Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso. Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz. Madam Board President, motion passes.
Board Action Item P. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the suspension with pay of teaching staff member employee number 1217 effective September 3, 2013. This suspension shall continue at least until such time as the Board has received notification regarding the disposition of a pending matter involving employee 1217, and the Board has considered the Superintendent's further recommendations related to employee number 1217's employment by the Board. The Superintendent and the Board... Business Administrative Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board of Education.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella? Mr. Masters? Roll call.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella. Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz. Madam Board President, motion passes.
We're almost done.
Five more.
Two more, two more. Board Action Item Q. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the previously submitted revised settlement agreement in the matter entitled Plickter versus Monroe Township Board of Education, New Jersey Superior Court Law Division Docket Number MID-L-185-11. The Board President and the Business Administrative Board Secretary and the Board Attorney are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement the aforementioned settlement agreement.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Chiarella? Mr. Tesler? Roll call.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Keep waking me up.
Mr. Zarneski. Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz. Madam Board President, motion passes.
And lastly, Board Action Item R. It is recommended that the Board of Education, I approve the previously submitted stipulation of settlement in the matter entitled in the matter of the tenure hearing of Anne Marie George, School District of the Township of Monroe, Middlesex County, which is pending before the Commission of Board of Education, New Jersey Department of Education, as Agency Docket Number 126-6/13. II, approve the suspension with pay of Anne Marie George effective September 13 through 2000... September 1, 2013, through January 31, 2014. And III, accept the resignation of Mrs. George effective February 1, 2014. The Board President, the Business Administrative Board Secretary, and the Board Attorney are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement the aforementioned stipulation of settlement.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski? Was that a motion? Okay.
Second.
Who's the second?
Second.
The second by Mr. Tesler? Roll call.
Mr. Braverman. Mr. Chiarella. Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz. Madam Board President, motion unanimously passes.
And that concludes the balance of the Superintendent's report.
Okay, then we will go to the public forum. We have one minute, because it's close to midnight. We will move back into public forum. We move back to public forum. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. We are going to adhere to our three minutes.
Do you want us to start now? Just please, no, don't start again. Just bend with me, because some of this pertains to what you discussed.
Well, we've got three minutes.
But then after that, if nobody else speaks, I get another three minutes.
Now you have two minutes and 45 seconds.
Come on, have a half a break. Anyway...
Your name and address for the record.
Mark Klein, 53 Turnberry Drive. Don't start again. Pertaining to the candidates, when the list of candidates went out, I must have gotten god knows how many phone calls and emails thanking me for running for the school board, except that I'm not running for the school board. And I want this known to the people, that my name is Mark Klein, not Michael Klein. And I would believe that I have a good name within Monroe Township, and I wouldn't want somebody running, who is unknown, to try to capitalize on my name. So I want everybody to know, it's Michael Klein, not Mark Klein. So when you go to the polls, and everybody should go to the polls, remember, it's not me. As far as S-2307, after 2307, one of the Board members came out and said that we lost because of my testimony. First of all, we won, it was 8-3-1, and my testimony, when I brought up about Salo, who happens to be the chairman, and he's the one that sponsored the Conversion Act that affected us, and also COA was letting them know that these legislative decisions that they make, how it negatively affects us in Monroe. Middlesex County Education Services Commission, I want to thank Mr. Masters for attending the meetings, every meeting, and following up on, or at least letting you know and us know, what is transpiring at Middlesex County Education Commission. His predecessor missed many meetings, and this is right from Finkelstein, but one of the things that was discussed, that was offered to us, was they were willing to take over our transportation department. We could get rid of our buses, we can get rid of the drivers, they would be responsible for all of the busing. And Mr. Finkelstein had told us, it was John Leary and myself, that they guesstimated we would save somewhere around $100,000 or more. Nothing was... it was offered to us, nobody ever got back to him. Now, this comes right after I got off the Board, or right before I got off the Board. Now, that takes care of that. As far as the developments, the state will not allow a planning board or a zoning board to turn down an application for a residential community based on its impact to the school system, which is stupid. You brought it up, I believe Mr. Masters brought it up, Ken Chiarella? It's foolish. I'm almost finished. I mean, there's nobody here, and I'm not going to keep you much longer. So that is what locks us in, that's what hurts us. Now, when you're talking about the development over by me, the one that's going to be 500 units, 400... I know, shut it off.
I'll give you 30 seconds more.
Okay, no, I'm almost finished.
All right, 30 seconds.
403 of those units are two-bedroom and three-bedroom. And as I said at the Planning Board, when that came up, I said, I guess if they have two-bedroom, the husband sleeps in one, and the wife sleeps in the other. You have federal averages, 1.7 children per family. If you just took one per family in the two-bedroom and three-bedroom, there's 403 children.